Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for January second, two thousand and twenty-four. My name is Carrie Marknik. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I'm going to read a few announcements. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, an act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to be alive through the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. I will now confirm board members and persons anticipating the agenda are remotely present and can be heard by stating the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
Amy Protski?
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmatives. Lori Connors?
Here.
Okay, there are no presenters or applicants on the agenda this evening, or a public comment, or executive session. So with that, I think we can get started. First on our agenda tonight is discussion of two thousand and twenty-four town meeting zoning related articles, including MBTA multi-family bylaw. So what do we start with then?
So unfortunately, I um, I got sick last week, so I wasn't able to make any progress on the zoning bylaws other than to incorporate the changes that we discussed at the last meeting. So there were only a couple of minor changes, so those are now incorporated into a version that is called January second. But I didn't forward it to you because it was, the changes were so completely minor that I, I figured I would just hold off until our next discussion session.
Okay.
The, one thing that I did send along to you, and of course, Carrie, you are aware, the consultants, so RKG Associates is the consultant who is, are going to do the affordability analysis to determine if we can increase the affordability component of our three A district above and beyond the ten percent. They need to know the specific parcels because it does vary depending upon the area of town that we're talking about. So we made the decision, Carrie, I defer to you, to hold off on doing the analysis in hopes that the board could pin down exactly the parcels that we want to go forward with for the three A bylaw. So I don't know if that's something you want to discuss tonight, or whether you want to hold off for a couple of weeks for Anthony to be present.
Well, should we, okay, so a couple of things. For the, first for the bylaws, the zoning bylaws, when do we need to get our public hearing done by? Based on when do we, has the schedule changed for when do we have to submit for the warrant or anything like that? I feel like it used to be February.
Yeah, normally they go over the dates, but of course, our finance director resigned. And we have a brand-new town administrator, so they're a little bit behind on announcing the dates for when we need to get things in by.
Okay.
So if we're following last year's schedule, it was the beginning of March is the deadline for getting the articles in. So I was hoping to have the public hearing either the first or the second meeting in February. And of course, the ZBA is interested in having a joint meeting with you folks to go over the warrant articles. So a good date for that could be either the next meeting or the first meeting in February.
Let's see, it seems like we may need to sort out some open ends for us as a board. The next me, by the next meeting. So I'm wondering if we do, do we need to leave room for two public hearings or just one for the zoning bylaws? For some reason, we've done two in the past. Why didn't we do that?
Um. I think there, it's because there were modifications that came out of the first public hearing. If I remember correctly, last year, there was an issue with advertising as well. So there was a late submission, so we had to advertise twice, if I remember correctly, because we had a late, a late bylaw addition.
You're right, but, but for some reason, I feel like every year we have two. Is this, is this a false memory?
Well, of course, my um, my experience dates back two years, so I could just speak to the two years. So when I arrived on the scene, it was March seventh of two thousand and twenty-two, and you folks had not yet had your public hearing. So we had to quit do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We always had two in the past, just in case. I don't know why. Or some years even, I think we've left the public hearing open all the way up to town meeting. And some boards meet the night of town meeting, but Kathy had said, oh, you can just leave it open. But for the most part, I think we closed it after two public hearings.
Okay, so worst case, if, what if we did um, wrapped up our bylaws on the sixteenth? Because Amy, it sounded like you wanted to go back with the signed bylaw for one more design review. Does that give you that?
Yeah, because we haven't met. Like, at the last planning board meeting, I wanted one more design review before we finished the sign bylaw. And we haven't met since the last planning board meeting, so our next meeting's next week.
Mm-hmm.
So we haven't, so I'd like to meet one more time?
Okay, so then maybe we could do the um, Z, joint meeting with the ZBA on the sixth. And I think in the past, what we've even done is had the ZBA before the public hearing. I don't know if we, we don't know, I think maybe because we just ran out of time. I don't know if that was by design or we ran out of time.
I would, I, I believe last year, we had ZBA at a separate meeting.
We did?
And then we had the public hearing at the next session.
Okay, so if we did um, ZBA on the sixth, then we could, could do our public hearing. Well, it stinks. It's a school vacation week. Is that school vacation week, the week of the nineteenth?
Yeah, it probably is.
That's, so that's the twentieth. Well, worst case, we could open our public hearing on the twentieth, and to Amy's point, just not close the hearing, and if we need to come back to it for that first Tuesday in March, although we don't know the deadline in March when these are due. Well, even if we wrapped it up on March fifth, the Board of Selectmen need to finalize. When, when do they meet? Is it the first Monday?
They usually meet the first and the third Mondays of the month.
Okay.
So I would imagine the fourth and the eighteenth.
So if we could wrap ours up on the fifth, they'd have it for their eighteenth, their meeting on the eighteenth. And is there just an amount of time that needs to be published for the public, the warrant?
Yes.
Meeting?
So I need to advertise for two weeks.
Oh, okay.
So the turnaround time is about uh, three weeks.
No, no, not for our own public hearing, for the town. I could swear, is that the same for the town? Um, you may not know that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if they have to also advertise for two weeks.
Yeah, I thought we had to do something where the town war, the warrant had to be available to the public for X period of time before town meeting.
Yes, so that's why they give us a deadline where we have to get the warrant articles in, which I believe is the first week of March. So that they have ample time to incorporate our articles and then advertise the warrant.
Okay, well, do you think tentatively that sounds okay? If it's the first week in March, that implies to me that the Board of Selectmen won't be looking until their meeting on the eighteenth anyway.
I think that that would be okay, as long as we wrap things up by March fifth.
Okay. So to take it back for a second, we have, we'll wrap up our bylaws on the sixteenth. We'll invite the ZBA for a joint meeting on the sixth, and, and of course, who knows what we have for applications coming up? Have the deadlines passed for applications?
We have no, no applications for January sixteenth.
Okay, and then we'll do ZBA on the sixth, then we'll open the public hearing on February twentieth, keep it open through March fifth, then we'll, we'll plan to close the hearing and do our own votes on March fifth to get that over for the select meeting on the eighteenth. Well, we'll pass it, we can, does that give you enough time, Lori? Do you need to do anything in between our vote and passing it in?
Well, of course, uh, you know, I, I'll plan to leave March sixth open, so if there are changes, the result from the March fifth meeting, I'll have March sixth to do it and then get it over to them.
Okay, does that, does that seem to work?
I think so.
Okay. All right, so Amy, that will give you time. All right, so back to the question again, going back to MBTA, so I, do we, does a board want to discuss MBTA tonight, whole, talk about on the sixteenth? I know we also got the downtown revitalization report. I personally did not have time to look at it in full. I don't know if that's something, I think we're
Yes, and I apologize for that. I intended to send that to you last week and then my week got screwed up, so I'm, I'm sorry. I actually had to go through my sent messages to see whether I sent it to you or not, because I couldn't remember.
No, I'm sure we're all going to read it on Christmas Day, but. Look what the Santa brought.
It is riveting reading.
So, um, board members, how do you feel? Do you, did you want to look at that first, read through it before we continue the MBTA discussion? Forward ahead, what are our thoughts on this?
I mean, Anthony asked to read it, so maybe we give him time to read it, and he's not even here tonight. And then discuss the parcels at the next hearing? I don't know, that's just my guess. My thought.
Yes, Millie and Amy have already read it, so they're, they're on my MPIC committee.
Yeah.
So it's just you and Bill and Anthony that haven't read it at this point.
Um, okay, I mean, it doesn't, honestly, Bill, do you have any preference? Did you want to talk about anything where we are at this point or any other thoughts or?
No, I think waiting for Anthony probably makes sense.
Okay, all right, so we'll do that. And Lori, you have the consultants on hold anyway, so that's fine.
Yes, just so that you're aware, we're still waiting for confirmation from a couple of the select board members. But the presentation is going to be at the joint meeting of the MPIC and the Select Board, which is scheduled for seven P M. on January eighteenth. So you folks are formally invited to attend the presentation and certainly feel free to ask questions.
Okay, great. So wait, you said that date is tentative or?
I'm just waiting for confirmation from one last select board member. We've received confirmation from two. The MPIC, it's the normally scheduled meeting of the MPIC. But unfortunately, the consultant team couldn't go to the select board meeting on the eighth. So um, we ended up having to push it to a, to a different meeting, so.
Amy, did you?
Yeah, I, I will confirm with all of you, but if you could leave that date open, that would be fantastic, because chances are it will occur on that date.
Okay, is it, is it a public? Is it, I'm sorry, in person?
No, it's going to be a Zoom meeting.
Okay. Amy, did you have something there? I thought I saw your hand.
Yeah, but it doesn't have to do with MBTA. So before we moved on with bylaws, I just had something else.
Oh, yeah, sure. No, that's fine. I, so that's great for that meeting. Okay, over to zoning bylaws, yes.
I just had some changes with the maker space definition. I looked it up a little because our maker space definition sounds a little more like industrial, how it's fabrication, and I had looked up some maker space definitions, and one said "A communal public workshop in which makers can work on small personal projects." And they talked more about three D printers and like kitchen setups where people can all use the kitchen setups and sewing machines, where the definition we had talks about distribution and it sounded like a warehouse, industrial warehouse, and I was concerned about it.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I could just send it forward and we could talk about it next meeting. When everybody's back, I'll send it to Lori, or if anyone else has some ideas too, we can talk about it the next meeting.
Okay, was that, so when we last left the meeting last time, Lori, I know you said you made a couple of changes. Otherwise, there really weren't. So we had that maker's space definition was one we wanted to look back on. Signed by law, you were going to go, you wanted to go back to design review. Did we have other outstanding items? MBTA, we were going to read downtown revitalization. We had some small changes. There was another small suggestion today that came through.
Yeah, the only, there were a couple of minor changes that I made. If I remember correctly, it was just um, under the article for site design standards, "Flat roofs may be allowed on multi-story buildings as long as the roof line projects upward."
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a discussion of, originally it said outward.
Yeah.
So that changed.
On that, does it have to be a multi-story building? Like, one of the buildings I saw downtown Hudson, and it had a flat roof, was Hudson Appliances. And it looked like a nice building. It was a flat roof because it had like a cornice or a parapet. So just having that little decorative top just made the whole building look nicer. And we have some buildings that want to do flat roofs and their single floors. I was wondering if it mattered. Did it have to be a multi-story to have decorative roof?
No. Well, my own personal opinion is we're trying to encourage people to go above one story in the downtown area.
But this is for all commercial districts, so somebody might not want to go above one floor in, in a certain area. But then they might want a flat roof. Might want to just spice it up just a little bit.
Hmm.
I don't know.
If you folks are okay with that, I'm, I'm fine with making that modification.
I'm fine.
I could just say flat roofs may be allowed on buildings as long as the roof line projects upward from the building surface as a decorative cornice or parapet.
Yeah, and usually, I think part of our site designs, it has to cover any mechanical features on the top anyway, so most likely, they're going to be doing something, some sort of parapet or something. So. I just didn't see why it had to be multi-family, I mean, multi-stories.
I can make that change.
That's fine. Bill, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
We had one other, what did we decide to do with the district? With the um, the zoning on Southwest Cut Off, not Southwest Cut Off, the um.
So you had asked me to send a request to Town Council.
Oh, yes.
Whether you could differentiate Route twenty versus Route nine. And I did send that request, and I got a automatic response saying that he was going to be on vacation.
Okay.
So I have not heard a response as of yet, but I should have something for our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any other outstanding items or homework we need to do? No, okay, so at the next meeting, I, we, I guess we'll go through them, decide, you know, how we want them to look in the end, and then we'll get that MBTA sorted out. It sounds like the MBTA bylaw itself was all squared away. We're primarily just looking now at the maps, not the bylaw itself. Um. Is there a way that the, the bylaw can pass? But say people don't like where we picked, and the maps are the problem. Can the bylaw pass without the maps? No.
No. No, because you have to have a specific location.
Okay.
So if, if the location doesn't pass, then the bylaw it doesn't make sense.
There's a special town meeting going to be in September and October for the fire station. So I would think if it doesn't pass with the maps, we could try again in September.
Yeah, that was part of the reason why I really wanted to go to the Springtown meeting, so that we could see how it goes at the Springtown meeting. And if it doesn't go well, then we'll have another opportunity at the Falltown meeting. So we can listen to the feedback and try again in the fall, and then we, we won't be harmed. We will still be in compliance because our deadline is December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. So that doesn't, if we try in the Springtown meeting and it doesn't fly, is that what you're saying? Then we can present again in the the same thing in the Falltown meeting? I thought you had to wait a couple of years.
You make changes.
So you have to modify.
Okay.
So if the problem is that the map doesn't pass, then it would enable us to, to modify the map and go with different locations. Or vice versa, you know, if the map passes, but the um, although
Content?
Probably makes sense to rope them into a single article. So they either pass together or they fail together, because otherwise it's going to be really confusing.
You think? Because I wonder, is it, like, at least if you can get one, is that better? I don't know, maybe not. Then you have to write, rewrite whatever it is you rewrite based on that, what was accepted, right?
But I think the challenge is how is the Attorney General's Office going to approve a bylaw that doesn't have a location?
Yeah, that's true.
And vice versa.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Well, I'm just thinking, like, sometimes at town meeting, we get wrapped up where we don't, the residents or attendees aren't clear on how to make amendments versus vote it down entirely, whereas like a, a bylaw is, if, if we had the ability to make amendments, well, I guess we could make amendments on the floor. The Planning Board can make amendments.
Yeah, I mean, a- anybody has the right to make amendments on the floor. So um, the important thing is, of course, we have to be clear. If, if it fails, we have to be clear as to why it failed.
Yeah.
Um. Sometimes people come armed with amendments already written out.
It could be a case for leaving our public hearing open till town meeting. So like, say some people miss our public hearing, but want to do an amendment for town meeting floor, and they come to us, and we say, that's a good idea, then we can have the amendment in, in advance. By not closing our public hearing.
Hmm.
Yeah, the important thing is, of course, you, you're going to have to continue the public hearing to specific dates and times, every single time, so.
And then we'd also, that would delay our own vote, our Planning Board vote.
Okay.
I mean, we could just, if we, if we want to do that and meet before town meeting, we just have to know, commit we're going to do that and understand that's when we vote and do that.
Maybe we just do some good advertising before our public hearing in March. You know, public hearing, we're going to do the MBTA, here's the map, put it on like the front page of the website with an explanation. I noticed Westboro has something, and I think we have a website already. We have a point for MBTA, and we can update it with all the information.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, um, what I can do is, in advance of our next meeting, upload the latest version of the bylaw, which you folks seem to be pretty solid on. The map, of course, is still kind of all over the place, so I don't really, I don't really know what to put for that, but um.
Well, is Avalon definitely one? Does everybody agree that Avalon's one of the spots? I mean, I'm pretty definite that would be one of the locations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's thirty-eight out of fifty of the acres right there. And then, I know we weren't going to talk about it, but I think we, at least the majority of us thought that Hudson Street maybe isn't a good idea because we're not going to have an agreement from that developer, and who knows how many would be developed there if there's no agreement, so we kind of ruled out Hudson Street, in my opinion. I don't know what you guys think.
I, I still have to underscore, if you folks are interested in grant money, then zoning areas that are fully built out is not going to be helpful. I am not going to be able to get grant money for that. So the, the funders are going to want to see that there is development potential, if not a proposed development. So in the case of Millbury, I was able to get a one point two million dollar grant from Masworks. But that's only because there was a forty, I think it was forty-seven unit multi-family apartment complex that was proposed for the center. And I believe they were actually um, I, I can't remember if they were permitted at that time, but they were definitely filed by that time.
If we allow three acres of Harvey, I mean, that's fifteen units right there. We do five acres of Harvey, that's seventy-five units being allowed. I don't think we can do Harvey and Hudson Street.
Three acres is how many units?
Um, forty-five, right?
Oh, forty.
Per acre. And, and you said yours was forty units, so if we allow up to forty-five units on the Harvey property, it'd be similar.
Well, can we post, if we're not sure on the land we want, because I think if we at least post the bylaw, that would be helpful for people to at least like get a sense of what's in it. Well, of course, they're going to care about the map. That's where the
Yeah.
Right.
That's where the meat is.
Yeah.
You, what are you doing?
Um. Okay, well, maybe, we'll, we'll have a chance to post it. Even if we don't figure it out till January sixteenth, we'll still have time to post it, to put it up and advertise it, so.
Yeah.
We'll have at least a month, actually, for our public hearings, February sixteenth. And Lori, do you want to, um, do you have a meeting with the ZBA? Oh, not till the end of the month. Are you, do you want to send a message to them to invite them for a joint meeting and see if that works for them too?
Absolutely. Yeah, we did discuss it at, I think it was our last meeting, so they are anticipating an invite, invite at some point, so they won't be surprised to get that email from me.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, anything else to discuss on zoning or MBTA? Lori, you look like you have something there.
I just received a text from Tim McInerney, our, our new town administrator, who is sitting here in the audience, and he would like to say hi to you all and introduce himself.
Let's see. For some reason. Oh, it looks like it. Hi, Tim, are you there?
I am, how are you?
Hi, hey, Tim, welcome. You picked an exciting night to come to the Planning Board.
Well, I saw the timing, I thought this is very good. It's only in the last ten minutes. I was like, you guys must be extremely thorough. I don't want to, I don't, I just wanted to say hello, put my face with my name and let you know that, you know, Lori and I have met. We've talked a lot about planning, economic development, the MBTA, lots of stuff, and I just, you know, I want to be in lockstep with her. I want us to be a Um, lots of stuff and I just, you know, I wanna be in lockstep with her, I want us to be a resource to you. And I wanted to introduce myself, so those are the things I wanted to cover, I don't wanna hijack the meeting, I wasn't really invited, so. I just wanted to say hello.
Oh, very nice. Well, thanks for coming, I'm Carrie Martinak, I don't know if everyone wants to. Say your name and I, and I guess maybe. How long you've been enjoying this ride? I think this is my sixth year of the planning board and. Um, it's been great meeting everyone and. And I think we made a lot of progress over the last few years, I don't know if anyone wants to, Amy's a uh vice chair, I'm gonna start with you, Amy.
All right, Amy Pretzky, and I think this is my tenth year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right? Cause only gonna run once. I think you start to learn more and more as the years go by, so you hate to retire when you finally know the most you've, you know, known. About all the bylaws and. Met a lot of people, residents, so. Hi.
And Amy also um Chairs Design Review Committee, uh, she was also part of the Town Common Committee that got our. New Town Common, I don't know if you've driven by, I'm sure by now you have, so Amy was instrumental in that. And also Master Plan, you've been on Master Plan for a while and.
Groundwater I was on and Open Space.
Yeah.
We're trying to get um a bike path through town, hopefully someday.
Millie or Bill? No, Millie, you're next, I think you've been the the third longest on this ride.
I have been, yep. Hi, Tim. I have been on for, uh, this is my fourth year and I I think I'm up for running again this year, I can't remember, I think I am.
No.
Next year.
Last year.
Last year you and I ran.
Oh, thank goodness, so we're clear for a while again, okay. Um, but yeah, no, it's been great, I have had a really good time. You know, wrapping my head around how to work with both Amy, Carrie, Bill and Anthony on making this town. Uh, a little bit better and having Lori come on board a couple of years ago, I think has been a a real momentum boost for us. So it's been great, yeah.
And Millie, you're also involved with Master Plan.
I am, yeah, yeah, that's really exciting commit co- committee, uh, we're working on downtown and hopefully uh get that wrapped up. So we can make some progress on how our downtown looks and feels. Um, and how we can all enjoy it better, yeah.
And CPC, I I have to do, I have to be a proud mom on all these.
If you say all these things, I'm just gonna feel really tired right soon, yeah. Uh, CPC, yes, I get to spend, uh, we get to spend towns money, which is really kind of a nice, nice uh bonus. Um, everybody in town has worked hard to be able to have some nice things and. And we get to uh look forward to applications and how to spend it. You know? Yeah, and historic district, you know, trying to keep some of the character of the town, trying to keep some of the uh history. Uh, as we go forward.
And then of of course, you can't miss Selah v Bistro, which Millie is involved with and helps to keep a pulse on. You know, when we talk about economic development and downtown business and things like that, it gives us a nice perspective.
Mm hmm. And I hear a lot about things going on. At Selah V. Those conversations are always fun.
And Bill, the newest of the bunch.
The newest of the bunch, yep, I'm still, I'm in my second year now, um. But they've, you know. It's very interesting ride, um, I will say, and you know, they've already roped me into other committees. So I'm the chairman of the Traffic Safety Committee, as well as the chairman of the uh town feasibility, Town Hall Feasibility Study Committee.
All right, and Anthony's not here tonight, um, Anthony Zaitin, um, I got, I think he has COVID, I'm not sure, he wasn't feeling well, but he um has been involved. He was involved with groundwater for a long time, open space, trails. Um, he's, he's been on, we actually are in the same year, so he's six years as well, so. Nice to meet you, anything we can answer, any planning questions you've been dying to know?
No, is there, I didn't know if there was any immediate need, obviously Lori's very capable and. You know, like I said, we've been communicating and trying to. Uh, figure out next steps to to make it easy for the community to understand things and so forth, and you guys doing a thorough job of. You know, talking, I've listened to you for twenty five minutes about. The MBTA and the fifty acres we need to preserve. Uh, or reserve, however you wanna put it. So I, you know, I look forward to helping you get to the right answer for that. And you know, just because something's owned one way and there's many. Uses for land, it doesn't have to be that particular use, so you could. You could choose as many as you want and you know, ultimately you're gonna have authority over. Over what gets put there, but at the end of the day, it's just one option for housing. So. It and you guys are being diligent, I'm not gonna overstep that, but I appreciate the fact that you are. Uh, getting close so we can get to a good article for town meeting and help the community make a decision that allows. Lori and I to continue to get grants that'll offset ever rising costs.
Hmm.
So. But if you need, I don't know if there's any immediacy for the for the planning board from me, I would. You know, just reach out, phone or email, I've talked to Amy once on the phone. Uh, and by email, so. You know, I'm available and I I want to uh continue to be available.
Wonderful, thank you. Anything that we can think of on the top of our minds?
We roll on our wish list. When the warrant's gonna close? Does he know when our uh bylaws are due?
I think the, you'll, you obviously you'll have a public hearing and and obviously you guys talked about keeping it open. I think the warrant closes or gets signed fourteen days prior to town meeting. Um, I just had to count this back for the. The sixty one A parcel, so I don't have it off the top of my head, but I could, I could totally get it to you.
Thanks.
All right, well, you caught us on a slow night, we don't have any wishes for you, but. I'm sure we'll think of something.
All right, it was good to meet you all, thank you for having me. Thanks for coming in. Nice to meet you. Bye, guys, thank you.
Okay, anything else then on? MBTA or zoning? All right, next on our agenda, we have, oh, an A and R, so first we have an A and R for two twenty three, two twenty seven South Street. Moving a lot line. Do you have, I don't know if I have a copy of that, do you have that, Lori, if it's on hand to bring up?
You're on mute, Lori.
Hmm.
All right, I'm talking to myself. As usual. Um, I have that, so let me just pull that up for you. Okay, so this is a uh simple lot line change. Uh, so you can see with my arrow. I am pointing out the original lot line. Uh, so what they're interested in doing is moving the lot line down here. So that they can sell this parcel. Um, so originally, these two parcels were owned by the same entity. Uh, or currently owned by the same entity. Uh, but they are interested in creating a buildable lot. So that's this lot one A. Uh, so I didn't see any issues with uh their proposal. So I recommend that you make a motion to endorse the A and R. Um, if you folks have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Amy, Amy, you have something?
Yeah, it's too little, I can't see it, I'm sorry, I was trying to zoom in my screen, but. I couldn't make it bigger. Can you make it bigger?
Yep.
So I missed it cause I was trying to zoom in my screen, are they moving the lot line back?
Yes.
Where the dash line is?
So that the dash line is the current lot line. Uh, so they're interested in moving the lot line down to the solid lot line.
So the dash line.
You can see that.
Through the house.
Current lot line splits this house in two.
Yeah.
So this is an existing single family home, so obviously that doesn't work. Uh, so they are moving the lot line so that they can create a buildable lot.
How did they ever do that in the first place?
I suspect that this is, you know, an old. Combination of lots that existed uh for a long time and because they were owned in common. Uh, they ended up not paying careful attention when they built this house.
I was on the board when they did the A and R, so. It isn't that old.
That's so weird, did it right through the house?
Yeah. And they already sold that house. So it's weird, like. Does the new, I don't think the new owner of that property actually owns the other piece. Because the other parcel's for sale. Online on Realtor dot com. And the top parcel already sold.
So wait, when you say the other parcel, which one are you talking about? I'm a little confused as to.
So the house sold, the house up on the hill?
So the house up on the hill sold or basically? Half the piece of property? Or half the house?
Whoever bought it must have bought it with a lot line through the middle of their house.
Yeah. How do you do that?
I don't know. That's what's really weird, that a real estate attorney wouldn't notice that. And then the other lot is for sale right now.
And when you say the other lot, were there only two lots before, is that what it is?
Yep, it was originally like four. And then when I was on the board. It was down to these last two.
So one sort of did a little dog leg around the other, it looks like.
Yes.
Okay. So now there's only two lots. But one of those lots goes kinda halfway through the house and they're trying to move that, so it doesn't do that anymore, but that is odd that it could sell that way.
Hmm.
Hmm. So the the new lot configuration conforms to the zoning requirements. So like I said, I didn't see any issues with it, it has sufficient frontage, sufficient access.
How big is the lot? I just, I can't see it still.
And it's. So the new lot is twenty one thousand seven hundred and eighteen square feet, so that's that lot one A.
Yeah.
So the existing lot currently. Is the twenty eight thousand one hundred and one square feet, so.
Hmm.
They're proposing to. Create this new lot, parcel A, six thousand three hundred and eighty three square feet. So that will be owned. With um with this parcel, existing lot two.
Oh, so now it's gonna be three lots.
Nope, uh, well, yeah, but this is a not a buildable lot.
Should we say that on there? Sometimes when we have not a buildable.
It does, there's actually a note.
Okay. Does that?
Right here, it says, create parcel A, not a buildable lot.
Sounds like somebody screwed up and they're trying to fix it. Which, I mean, doesn't matter, at least they're fixing it.
And it looks like the driveway has a little bit of a turnaround, does that meet the setback requirement on the backside of that lot for? Distance between the back lot line of one A now?
So driveways can be right up to the um lot line. If you remember, last year we tried to change that.
Yeah.
And it got defeated at town meeting, so you can have a driveway right up to the lot line.
Okay.
And it's so the house and the driveway are straddling two different lots.
Yep. Wait, so if they sold, oh, it's still. Currently it's straddling two lots, but when this is all said and done, they'll be on the same lot, the house and the driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought you said there's a third little lot in there, six thousand square feet.
Yeah, so this is going to be owned in common. With uh existing lot two, creating lot two A.
Yep, so there'll be two lots. Really?
Yeah, so this, yeah, so this is combined with this, creating this lot two A.
Yep. Okay, and so which lot is not buildable?
Parcel A.
The little square in the middle?
This, this little, this.
But that's no longer a lot, they're moving that line.
Yeah, it's um, so they describe what they're doing down here in the notes. So here it says. Create new conforming lot one A and lot two A.
Mm hmm.
So sometimes when you look at the picture. Um, it's not as clear and then you gotta read the notes to really understand what's going on.
Hmm.
Yeah, it sounds like someone made a mistake. So now there's a confusing A and R.
Okay. I mean, obviously they meet their this requirement, so. Hmm, mystery aside. Any questions from the board on this one?
No, does it, can you pull it up a little? Like, I can't see the top lot, so the house meets the setback from the lot. One A?
Yes.
How many feet is that? I can't, I still can't see for some.
It's uh twenty eight point five feet from this new lot line.
Uh huh.
And then it's thirty two point four feet from the side lot line.
And what is, what is on the backside of this, at the very top of this, just out of curiosity? I can't see what's up there. Okay.
A lot of ledge, right? You can see all the rocks. And that's what it was, the house wanted to build at the very top, and even when we had the application originally, we're like. Not gonna wanna go all the way to the top with all that ledge, it's not, it's gonna be too expensive. So they must have decided to build it lower.
Hmm, interesting.
And ended up straddling the other lot.
Hmm. So bottom line, there is no longer a lot line in the middle of this house.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Bill, you're quiet, do you have any thoughts on this one?
No, I think it makes perfect sense, so.
Okay. Any further questions on this one? Okay, is there a motion to endorse the A and R for two twenty three, two twenty seven South Street? Second?
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Hi.
Amy?
I.
Millie?
I.
Me, Carrie's an I. Okay, uh, next we have bond releases, starting with a bond release for. The Birchwood retire, which is, there's one we're not doing tonight, which one is the one we're not doing tonight?
Uh, so the one we're not doing is Talbot Park West.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the information that was included. Did not provide me with an address, so I could not find the file on this. This property, um. So that's why I'm requesting that you don't act on it, because I need more information in order to craft the motion.
Okay, so why don't we start with the Birchwood Retirement Community? And is there anything to present for this or?
No, um, so Fred prepared a letter. Um, which you should have received uh in advance of the last meeting. So the uh information that he provided is that the bond amount was sixty three thousand dollars. Um, this. Bond was required prior to the time that Fred actually came to work, which I believe was like. Nineteen ninety seven or.
Yeah.
Easy like that. Um, the project was completed many years ago. So therefore, the obligation for the application to retain, for the applicant to retain these funds. Should have been released uh many years ago. But for whatever reason, the um. Treasurer still has this. In their uh files as being an outstanding obligation. Um, so I provided you with a draft motion, uh, which would release that obligation.
Okay, any questions from the board? All right, is there a motion to release whatever remaining interest it has or may have in the lender's agreement among the new Birchwood Corporation? Forward Financial Company and the Planning Board dated March twenty seventh nineteen ninety seven. To provide security for the performance by New Birchwood Corporation of all covenants, conditions, agreements, terms and provisions set forth in the covenant between the Northborough Planning Board. And Aubrey B. Dingley dated January twelfth nineteen eighty seven, recorded in Worcester Registry of Deeds in Book. One one nine seven eight, page twenty nine, for the definitive subdivision plan entitled Dingley Dell Retirement Community Park.
For the definitive subdivision plan entitled Dingly Dell Retirement Community Park, Northmore, Massachusetts. Prepared for Aubrey B. Dingly of one oh five East Main Street, Northmore, Massachusetts. Prepared by Moore Survey and Mapping Corporation, revised through October twenty-seventh nineteen eighty-six, further revised March thirteenth nineteen eighty-nine. And recorded with the Worcester Registry of Deeds in Plan Book six one six, Plan five two.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of Bill?
Hi.
Millie?
I.
Amy?
I.
And Carrie's an I.
Have they even found who they're releasing the money to? I know it's not, I wonder if they're still around.
Um. I just prepared the motion. So I think that this is, this is just mostly a paperwork issue. Uh, so we will, you know, I do have the file on this one. Uh, so we will mail it to the applicant um that was listed in the file. Uh, but uh, the important thing is that the treasurer will have a record of this motion. So they can then release it. Um, so.
Then it goes into those state funds where you get the letter that you have money waiting for you.
This isn't actual cash, so none of these are cash that the treasurer's office has on hand. It's all paperwork. So it's pretty much just an accounting exercise.
So there's no money being exchanged?
There is no money. Nope. Hmm, um Lori, I just noticed you did include a motion for the A and R. Was the motion we made sufficient? I think we were just missing when it was dated and who it was prepared by. Is that okay? Yeah, that's, that's sufficient. Okay. All right, moving on to Maynard Woods subdivision for a bond of eighty-six thousand six hundred. Anything on that one to share? Um, so this was a residential subdivision that was completed and accepted at the two thousand ten annual town meeting. So the obligation for the applicant to retain these funds should be released, since it's no longer privately owned. Okay, any questions from the board on this? Okay, is there a motion to release whatever remaining interest it has or may have in the lender's agreement among Casa Builders and Developers Corporation? Bank North N A and the Planning Board dated June fifteenth, two thousand four, to provide security for the performance by Casa Builders and Developers. Corporation of all covenants, conditions, agreements, terms and provisions set forth in the certificate of approval dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and three. For the definitive subdivision plan entitled Maynard Woods definitive subdivision of land in Northborough, Massachusetts. Prepared by Thompson Liston Associates, Inc., dated January sixth, two thousand and three, revised through February twenty-fourth, two thousand and three. And recorded with the Worcester Registry of Deeds in Plan Book seven nine four, Plan fifty-seven.
They're moved.
Second? All in favor of Bill?
Hi.
Millie?
I.
Amy?
I.
And Carrie's an I. Okay, we will move on to the Lawrence Falls Community, which is a bond release for forty thousand. And anything on this one? So this project was completed in two thousand fourteen. And the bond posted by Franchi Equipment is no longer required. And the obligation for the applicant to retain these bonds should be released at this time. Okay, any questions from the board on this one? Okay, is there a motion to release whatever remaining interest the planning board has or may have in Safe Co. Insurance Company of America Performance Bond? Number six two five one one eight two, dated November nineteenth, two thousand and four. To provide security for the performance by Franchi Equipment Company, Inc. Of all covenants, conditions, agreements, terms and provisions. Set forth in the Planning Board Special Permit with Site Plan Approval Decision dated May twelfth, two thousand and three. For the age-restricted condominium developed entitled Lawrence Place, Site Plan Prepared by Thompson Liston Associates, Inc. Dated July sixteenth, two thousand and two, last revised September thirtieth, two thousand and two.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of Bill?
Hi.
Millie?
I.
Amy?
I.
And Carrie's an I. That's fabulous. So I do have uh documents um that I will need both Carrie and Amy to sign. Okay, so if you folks could come in um sometime this week, they will be available for you to sign. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm wearing my N ninety-five.
I know, right?
Oh my gosh. Sounds like you guys are all getting COVID again.
Yes, that would be great if you come prepared. I, I have a mask, but uh, I've been trying, uh, today I spent a lot of time holed up in my office. As I still have my cloth.
That's right, you guys are pretty socially distanced, so that's good.
Yes, yes, there's a, there's a giant wall between us, so. Any subcommittee updates tonight?
I can, I can tell you what the CPC has in front of it if anybody wants to hear.
Oh, yeah, sure. Sure, that sounds great.
Couple things, um, big thing is uh Melican Middle, Middle School Courts. Are gonna be redone or hopefully be redone. Um, they're pretty old and they've got lots of cracks and uh, aren't as playable. Surfaces. Sorry, is it the basketball courts or the tennis courts?
Um, I think they're doing the combination because they are gonna be adding some, I believe, some pickleball courts.
Okay.
Adding, but re-converting some.
Cause I know they just did the basketball courts in two thousand sixteen, so I was like, wondering if they were redoing those.
I think it's mostly the tennis. I have to look and see if there's, I don't, I don't remember if there's basketball, but I can't. I think it's the tennis courts. I think it's just the tennis, but.
Okay. I was just curious.
It says school courts. It does say uh four basketball courts, six tennis, four basketball. But that, that, uh, I think they're the outdoor ones. Was that Melican Middle Schools that were redone?
Yeah, I've got the article and I remember when um they did them. Two thousand sixteen, they spent a lot of money.
Two thousand sixteen?
Yeah, I can send you the article.
Yeah, that'd be great, cause I don't think we um have had uh time to really discuss it. We just had a, a, the presentation on it. Um, the other thing that they're putting on is they're putting on soundproofing on the new pickleball courts. Because of the very distinct sound that the ball makes when it's being whacked around. Um, so the neighbors have been very nice, but they just, I think would appreciate a little bit of the dampening of that really distinctive sound. As they're trying to enjoy maybe breakfast on their outdoor porch in the summertime. Um, we also have a restoration uh proposal in front of us for the First Parish uh Church Reconstruction of the steeple. Um, it's been a couple of years, over the couple of years, we've been, there's been some water damage and there's been bits and pieces. That have been um refund, uh repaired through CPC funds, but this is the major repair for the steeple. And hopefully, if something gets, we, if it can get repaired, they can get the bell back up and maybe even use the bell for town things.
I had a comment on that one too.
Yeah.
But I should probably bring into CPC is, I used to live across the street from that church and um, when they put the AT&T. Cell antennas in that steeple is when they damaged it and it started leaking. So I'm wondering if anybody ever reached out to AT&T and said, hey, maybe you have to pay for some of this, since you started our water problem.
I wasn't aware that that was the, the start of the water problem.
I don't know. My dad's an architect and he, we lived across the street. He noticed it after the antennas went up. So he's always wondered, you know, did CPC ever go after AT&T and say, um, maybe you should foot some of the bill?
I don't believe so. I think that's new information again. Thank you, Amy.
Worth a shot to ask AT&T.
Well, it also makes you wanna understand what the repercussions are if they're putting cell towers and on communication. Uh, equipment on older structures or on historical structures too.
Yeah.
There's gotta be some, you know, some responsibility if that is causing damage.
Yeah.
Um, so I am going to ask about that. I appreciate that. Uh, we have a historic marker, an aqueduct historic marker sign application. Because apparently the other one got stolen or damaged or taken. It's gone. So unfortunately, um, the replacement is, not a lot of money, but at the same time, it's, it's gotta be replaced. And then there's just some reimbursement of conservation funds and uh affordable housing funds, but just a few interesting things.
Very nice.
Okay, any other subcommittee updates? All right, so our next meeting is on January sixteenth and then hopefully we'll be doing a joint meeting on February sixth. We have that MPIC meeting, so far so good for January eighteenth at seven P M. And then ZBA on the twenty-third. Anything interesting on the ZBA meeting coming up on the twenty-third? Uh, so we have a um, an appeal of the building inspector's opinion. Uh, having to do with. First I get the address.
Three forty-five West Main Street.
Of course Amy knows off the top of her head. Thank you.
Trabi site.
Oh, is that? That property had previously been a hazardous waste facility. And before it was a hazardous waste facility, it was a contractor's yard. Um, so the property owner is, is trying to. Uh, re-initiate the contractor's yard um use. And the building inspector provided a written determination saying that that use has expired. So now they have to uh conform with the existing zoning. Uh, which would not allow that use. So that is the nature of the appeal. On uh, at the ZBA meeting. All right then, if there is no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of Bill?
Hi.
Millie?
I.
Amy?
I.
And Carrie's an I. All right, thanks everyone. Happy New Year.
I think that was record time.
Happy New Year.
What am I gonna do for the rest of the night? I know, this is unheard of. They, they all went for dinner. I'm like, uh, okay. Bye.
Have a good evening.
Bye.